Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning to the entire council. Mr. President, if you don't mind, what I'll do this morning with you and your colleagues is jump right in. You all know that these facial covers aren't the best, so let me know if you can't hear me. I'm going to either stop and/or repeat myself. This morning, I will be presenting to you the fiscal year 2021 budget. There's a lot of information to share, Mr. President and Council, but I will try to be succinct and to the point. I'm gonna have some brief remarks first, and then Lester Smith, along with myself, will present you some information along with the book that we can also have our audience follow by screen. Years from now, when we reflect on the year 2020, the coronavirus pandemic will be the moment norms will shatter, the economy stalled to a level not seen since the Great Depression, and our view of the future seemed a bit more in question. I think what I appreciate, though, is together, and when I say together, we, the mayor and the council, we responded to the call. I want to thank you all personally for partnering with me as we move quickly to take the steps to protect our residents, our employees from the pandemic through curfews, mandatory face covering ordinances, and securing funds for PPE, hazard pay, as well as overtime. As a city, we partnered with others to provide relief for small businesses and displaced workers directly affected by the economic crisis created by the pandemic. And we have stood as a committed partner in the national call for social justice. We present this budget at a time when we join other cities in facing a great challenge. We've seen the impact of the pandemic on revenue, but we don't clearly see what the future holds for the pandemic and work on the vaccine. Our Finance Department currently projects a $63 million revenue shortfall through June 30th of 2021. Again, our Finance Department currently projects a $63 million shortfall through June 30th of 2021 due to the reduction in business taxes. Again, that's from a reduction in business taxes. Eighty-two percent of our revenue comes from those business taxes. That's eighty-two cents of every dollar directly connected to business license, occupational taxes, use taxes, and sales taxes. And we will not truly understand the city's financial position until after business license collections in the first quarter of 2021. Now, the National League of Cities projects a $360 billion shortfall for American cities through 2022. Already, many cities have made drastic cuts to capital improvement, public safety, and many programs. I believe we, the City of Birmingham, cannot let this economic crisis interfere with our commitment to basic services, to our residents, and the 99 neighborhoods. And so this proposed budget remains focused on neighborhood revitalization as well as fiscal responsibility. The city will invest in city infrastructure to support our communities and attract new businesses. This budget includes a $10 million allocation for street resurfacing. This budget prioritizes investment in deferred maintenance and rolling stock because neglecting our duty to serve as good stewards of our resources is not acceptable, particularly during an economic crisis. We will do right by our employees and protect our financial standing by again increasing the city's contribution to the pension fund. I'm proud to say with this budget, the city will have increased those contributions by 70% over the last two years. And we will continue funding for important initiatives such as Birmingham Promise, Birmingham On Demand, and our recycling program, City Hall. That's H-A-U-L. Now, to accomplish this, we have already implemented cost savings that many of you all are aware of. The city has put a freeze on hiring to address the current crisis. We've saved by eliminating all nonessential travel, training, dues, and subscriptions, and office supplies. Overtime has been reduced for all non-public safety positions. Again, overtime has been reduced for all non-public safety positions. The city has notified the boards and agencies in our community that we will reduce all non-contractual funding by 12.4 million. Vendors who staged many events and festivals in the city have been notified that cost waivers for city services will not be an option this year. Economic incentives have been reduced by 1.7 million. As you know, we have reduced personnel costs already through suspension of merit raises, longevity pay, and the suspension of cost of living adjustments, otherwise known as COLA. This budget also removes 447 excess vacant positions at a savings of more than $15.8 million. We've moved quickly to find savings and reductions, but if I'm being very honest with you, we still must do more. Now, the current economic crisis magnifies a trend in the city's operational cost structure. For several years, increased annual costs have directly countered annual growth in revenue. And without a correction to that trend, the city's budget will be unsustainable in coming years, especially in times of economic crisis. Many of you all know the mission of this administration, which is building community through servant leadership. And so as we work to continue basic services, I must lay by example, which is a call and conversation I had with all appointed staff this morning. Effective immediately, I will voluntarily reduce my pay by 10%. In addition, we will implement a 3% to 10% pay reduction for all Mariorian appointees. We've taken every step to make sure basic services continue in the city while creating stability in operational costs to withstand any additional hits to the economy. It is our fiscal responsibility to taxpayers, to furlough employees who cannot currently perform their normal work functions due to closed facilities. Please let me repeat that. It is our fiscal responsibility as mayor and council to the taxpayers, to furlough employees who cannot currently perform their normal work functions due to closed facilities. This action will apply to full-time employees at all cultural and recreation facilities currently closed due to the pandemic. In addition, we will furlough all part-time employees. And the city will suspend nine paid holidays in this fiscal year. This will provide a budget saving spread over the calendar of the year rather than in one concentrated pay period. These are hard decisions. They don't come lightly, and it's emotionally heavy. But combined, these actions will reduce spending by $35 million in fiscal year 2021. Combined, these actions ensure no reduction takes place in public safety or general government services. I spoke with our employees this morning because before I presented this information to the public, I thought it was fair, the same advance notice with hard news we gave to boards and agencies, our employees deserve that same advance notice. They are our greatest asset, and I believe we are to be very thankful for their service. But we must remember our duty is to the people, the residents, and the taxpayers who make up the 99 neighborhoods. This budget is a commitment to those residents that we will do the job they put us here to do. Mr. President and Council, at this point in time, I'm gonna allow Chad Mitchell to pass you the proposed budget booklet along with Kev and Moore, I believe. Lester Smith will come up here and join me as we present some additional information that you all can follow along. At this point in time, as it relates to this book, I imagine you're gonna need some time and want some time to go through it. However, for this morning's presentation, I have this document that we'll walk through together. I know it's thick, but trust me, it won't take long. This information will also be on the screen for you as well. Whoever's quartered back in the screen, could you all pull up the information we have, please? You never got it? Alright. No worries, we will continue. The document before you has the 2020 adopted budget, and you see the revenue adjustments. In addition to that, you see the expenses for our personnel costs and our general fund expenditures. You see the total gains and losses before the cost adjustment. Then you see the reductions of costs. Overall personnel is 26 million less. Boards and agencies, as I stated earlier, is 12.4 million less. Economic incentives of a decrease of 1.7 million less, and the restructuring of our debt and warrants is 3.8 million. That leaves a gap of 23 million, we feel, which we close that gap by going into our reserve account, $23 million. You see on this same page that we have not deviated from our priorities. Many of you all have heard me speak to the fact that when a resident walks out of their home, they look to the left or right. There's an overgrown lot or a dilapidated structure. They pull out of their driveway and they drive down the road. There's a street that hasn't been paved or pothole. They expect basic cities' functions and services to continue, economic crisis or no crisis. So it was important that we keep funding at the core of what's your priority as counselors, what's my priority as mayor, and the priority of the residents. Again, that's $10 million in street paving, 3.5 million in demolition, 1.25 in weed abatement, 300,000 in land bank. We know that there has been a delay in deferred maintenance or not the right investments in deferred maintenance. So as you see, 3 million in deferred maintenance, 4 million in rolling stock, which includes fire trucks, police cars, as well as public works, equipment and trucks, and of course, continued land bank support. You switch over to revenue. You see the 2020 to 2021 budget revenue. The adopted budget again was at 451 million. We have some good news in the middle of this economic crisis. Our property taxes have increased by 3.4 million. Permits and fees, as it relates to construction, et cetera, as done the City of Birmingham good, has increased by 3.3 million. However, everything else took a hit. Charge for services, other revenue, and business taxes, which saw a $63 million decline, right at 62.7 million. And so this proposed 2021 operating budget versus last year at 451 million is proposed at 389.8 million. As you go over to the next pages, you see where we took the hits in sales taxes, lodging taxes, leasing rental, business license, occupational taxes. The next two lines, you can see the trend as it relates to this peak of when business licenses come in, and this is a note, I'll take the time to express this to you. The coronavirus has proved to be volatile times, and you can't necessarily predict everything. Our budgets are usually based on past performance as it relates to historical trends and data. As we've combed through and presented this budget to you today, and you all were gracious and you gave us an additional three months because we had no historical data to measure this off, we still have to assume and prepare for possibly the worst as it relates to our business license don't come in until January and February. So we were safe in the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2020 fiscal year that ended June 30th because we got our business license taxes in January and February. Then the economy hit rock bottom in March. You've heard me say it before, but today, for example, we know businesses such as Lucy's and Bobaloo and so many others, maybe six to seven that just come to mind, close permanently. That means we'll never see their business license taxes again. We'll never see their sales taxes again. We'll never see their occupational taxes again, et cetera. We don't know what's gonna happen in January and February. By definition, these are Lester words, not mine, that's the City of Birmingham's Christmas. That's when we receive the most of our revenue. So we can only hope for the best. You switch over, you can see the business license, business tax license. You see these mountain-looking figures. What that looks like is those peaks are pretty much every quarter we're being paid. You see 19 versus 2020, so it's down. We're gonna switch over to expenditures. Many of you all know, today is the first day I don't have to actually let me borrow a dollar because I actually have it for you right here, if you turn to this page. You see that every dollar that goes out of the city, 70 cent is to city employees. Boards and agencies make up 8 cent. Debt services make up 4 cent. Utilities make up 4 cent, and you have a remaining about 14 cent that includes a lot of things. If you imagine a turnip, I want you all to know we squeezed everything we could out of the 30 cent before we went to the 70 cent. So that started with the boards and agencies, and if it was a non-contractual non-contractual relationship, their funding was decreasing anywhere from 50 to 100%. We were looking to restructure our debt services. Again, you see where we're gonna net. And there wasn't much we can do with utilities. So then we came to the 70 cent, which has been explained to you already. You go to the next page, you look at 2020 to 2021 budget expenditures. You see how we solve for the gap. The personnel cost reduced at 26.2 million. Boards and agencies, 12.6 million. Economic incentives, 1.7 million. Debt restructure, 3.8. But we still had a gap of other city services, which included certain equipments and contracts we had or obligated towards. One of those contractual obligations, for example, that we couldn't solve for, but is presented to us in the middle of this, is the crossplex. That's how you get that red 5.7. You have other things such as Acxiom and the equipment, cameras, et cetera. That's how you get to the 5.7, all of that combined. You see our expenditures doesn't match the 389. That's 412. That's how you got that 23 million gap, which is where we went into the reserve. You go to the next page, you look at personnel costs. We tried to do this with the least amount of pain point to our employees, attempting to keep everybody employed. Unfortunately, we were only able to keep a little over 90% of them employed, not 100%. We started with the vacant positions. Again, those vacant positions were 447, right at 15.8 million. What's been happening in the past is surplus personnel, the shell game. Y'all know what I'm talking about. The vacant positions were used as overtime. So when this new budget presented to you for the first time, the city actually had to bake in overtime. It had to be actually included in the actual budget, which is why you're seeing red, 9.5. Technically, that's still a reduction from last year. Overtime was, what is it, 11 or 12 million? Actually, last year, overtime was 22 million. You see the salary reduction of my appointed staff is half a million. Suspension of the non-paid holidays for all employees is at 2.5 million. We know through attrition via retirements, that's a cost savings roughly about 4. And then the furlough positions I spoke to earlier, all the part-time positions is a total of 129. It's 1.3 million. The furlough of the culture and recreation employees, 259 of them, 11.6. That's a total personnel cost reductions of 26.2 million. You go to the next page, and what you see is a high level of defunded vacant positions. So on the general government, which includes departments such as the mayor's office, it includes human resources and legal and community development, and I'm missing so many others. There were 38 positions cut. On the public safety, which includes police, fire, public works, we cut 188. And on the culture and recreation, we cut 221. That's how you get the 447 and the total costs attached to it. Then we broke it down for you by department. So there was no department that went unscathed. Our police department was cut 48 positions. I want you all to skip to this page where it shows the cuts for boards and agencies. I think since May, I've been sharing with you all there are no sacred cows. Everybody's gonna receive a pain point. I want to say probably over the last eight to nine weeks, we've been reaching out to executive directors, presidents, and CEOs, as well as their board chairperson and vice chairperson, having webexes and calls, et cetera, about what was coming and what they received last year wasn't gonna be on the table this year. I want to speak to two of these organizations while I'm on this page. Birmingham City School System and the Birmingham Transit Authority are very unique and stand out versus everybody else, and it needs to be explained publicly. These two organizations are technically their decrease in funding or their no funding from us is being offset from other sources of funding. The Transit Authority, for example, received 21 million in CARES funding. We continue to be in talks with Frank Martin, as well as his board, around solving for, making sure that no services are cut. We believe that we've reached something that works out. They cannot spend all of their funding on the City of Birmingham riders. However, City of Birmingham riders make up 84% of their ridership. So we do expect some of that CARES money to offset what we can't give them this year. That conversation is a future conversation related to the first two quarters of 2021, which are the third and fourth quarter of our city's budget. The school system had a conversation with their superintendent, Dr. Sullivan, as well as all none of their board members this past Friday, letting them know the bad news and the good news. The bad news is they will not be receiving funding out of our general fund. However, their budget that they receive from our other taxes hasn't changed. So they'll be receiving over 100 million just out of regular avalori and property taxes. But the good news is what they're not receiving out of our general fund discretionary money is offset by increase in capex dollars, capital expenditures. So all the economic deals that Dr. Carpenter's team is bringing to the City of Birmingham that we're getting yes to, the deals that Counselor John Hillier and his Economic Development Committee are approving, and the whole body is approving, is allowing us to do more construction in our city. Think of some of the recent deals. The FedEx on Lakeshore, the deal that's coming with the Old Central Plaza, the new stadium, all these deals. It's increasing capex dollars that are going directly to the school system every year. This year, we're happy to state that a little over 2 million that's going directly to the school system. And so we gave them the bad, that they weren't receiving discretionary money, but we gave them the good. They're receiving direct money from the economic gains that we're bringing to the city. As you see everybody else, again, if it wasn't a contractual obligation, they receive a significant cut. This is also a good time to state to the residents of the City of Birmingham, patrons of the City of Birmingham, private citizens of the City of Birmingham, small businesses of the City of Birmingham, and corporate Birmingham. There was ever a time to show your love, show your support to an organization, a cultural asset you love, City of Birmingham School System, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, Birmingham Museum of Art, Vulcan Railroad Park, Red Mountain, Ruffner Mountain, Arlington, Schloss, Negro Southern League Museum, Southern Museum of Flight, and so many other boards and agencies that you love. If there was ever a time to support them, now is that time. And when I say support, I mean financially, as an individual, as a patron, as a citizen, as a small business owner, as corporate Birmingham, because they are receiving an extreme less funding in city taxes this year. As you go to this page, you see it's titled expenditure overview by department. I'm almost done, Mr. President and Counsel. I want you all to flip to this page. It's titled general government. Every department internally in the City of Birmingham will see a pay decrease with the exception of three. One of them, I'm gonna go into detail about. The three are our Finance Department, our Human Resources Department, and our Police Department. Earlier, you heard me state it that I cut positions out of all the departments, and that included these three departments. And so then the question is, well, why are these three departments' budgets not showing that if there was a decrease in hits, then we would think there would be a decrease in funding? However, the City of Birmingham, you know one of our core values is efficiency. We've been working on making government more efficient. That includes internally as well. I think we all know that we've had finance employees embedded in various departments throughout the city. We've had HR employees embedded through departments throughout the city. And we've had security guards embedded throughout various departments through the city. And so from an accountability standpoint, from a more efficiency standpoint, and from a more, not control, but more so, how to deliver services from HR, from finance, from security, we moved everybody out of individual departments and put all of those people who are in HR back into the HR department. Therefore, you will see a small increase in their budget. We put all the Finance Department employees back all in the Finance Department. I want you to think of the Museum of Art, their security guards. Municipal Court, I mean Municipal Court, their security guards. When you walk into City Hall, we have security guards here. And Arlington has security guards, and Schloss, and Southern Negro Museum, and all of these different buildings and facilities we have have non-sworn officer security guards. But what we found is there's been no coordination among them. What we found is if one person or two people get sick, a billing is down on the security, after 5:00 PM on a weekday, on the weekend. And so we shifted all those civilian employees, which is 92 of them, to the Police Department. Their FTE and hair count is going to follow them. Therefore, you will see a significant increase in the Police Department's budget. That is not for sworn officers. Remember earlier, I told you we cut the Police Department's budget. However, you will see an increase in the Police Department's budget because non-sworn officers in the form of security guards have all shifted to one department instead of being spread out. That would have happened regardless of the, or separate from the coronavirus. That would have happened regardless of the, um, or separate from the coronavirus because we've been working on our efficiencies. You see it in the same thing in public safety, culture and rec, and what I just explained with the police department is an actual detailed page for you. I wanna speak to the fund balance. Again, the proposed expenditures is four-twelve-point-eight, the proposed revenue was three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-point-eight. That left a twenty-three-million-dollar gap, which we went into our reserve fund. You see on the next page, different funding needs related to internal and external. And then I want Lester to come up here and talk about the pension right quick, and then, Mr. President, I'll close out in a thirty seconds.
Good morning, I'm Lester Smith, I serve as the Finance Director for the city of Birmingham. The page that you're looking at now, which has to do with the pension, the reason this is in here is there's been a lot of conversation over, I guess, the last four months about quote-unquote rainy day fund, general reserve fund, how come we cannot leverage those, uh, funds to relieve some of the burden that the city is currently feeling in its budget? One thing I wanna make everybody aware of is that this is a layout of our current ratings from Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. If you look, uh, the little green box signifies where our previous rating was. The blue box signifies where our current rating is. If you'll see that Moody's, last year we were rated AA-two, now we're rated AA-three, they downgraded us last March. In addition to downgrading us, because they kept us at a high-grade level, they changed our outlook from stable to negative. S&amp;P has not done a review of our credit last year or this year thus far. If we move to Fitch, you'll see that last year, Fitch, in February, downgraded us from high-grade, AA-minus, where they had us at negative outlook, they downgraded us to a upper-medium grade, A-plus, but changed our outlook to stable. One of the reasons that the city was downgraded, and one of the concerns that all the credit rating agencies continue to speak to, is the city's unfunded pension liability, which is closing in on one billion dollars. Okay? So when you look, what I've done is I've simply taken excerpts from the actual reports that we get from the credit rating agencies, and it lists factors that could lead to an upgrade and factors that could lead to a downgrade. One of the reasons that we've been able to maintain, other than the two downgrades last year, our current rating is because we had reserves, i.e., quote-unquote, the rainy day fund, as well as the general reserve. So it's important that we continue to protect that funding. When you look at the items mentioned, the factors that could lead to an upgrade and factors that could lead to a downgrade, there are three items right now impacting the city of Birmingham. Those are those three checkmarks there, one is good, two is bad. I've got one, significant and sustained improvement in the pension fund, I'll kinda touch on later. The other two that could lead to a downgrade is declines in reserves, which is what I'm speaking to right now, as well as deterioration of tax base size, which is what we're experiencing right now. If we flip over to the next chart, it was imperative, if you think about it, two years ago, we were at about a fifty-two percent funding of what they say our annual contribution could be. Last year, we increased the pension contribution from eight-and-a-half percent up to twelve percent, which was a forty percent increase. Okay? That took us up to right at about a, um, seventy percent funding. This year, we're projecting another two-and-a-half percent increase. That will bring us up to right at ninety percent funding of our ARC, that's what this chart shows. It shows that the city's contribution of fourteen-point-five percent gets us close to the ADC, as it was determined as of June thirtieth, 2019, of sixteen-point-oh-six percent. So I wanted to speak on this, that, uh, it's still important, from the city's perspective, to not only manage the current economic crisis, but also to lead and invest in the future. This contribution increase over last year does both of those things.
Thank you, Lester. As I close out, Mr. President, thank you for your time, and, um, the Counsel, thank you for your time. I know I've reached out to many of you all, and then we will be doing some one-on-ones tomorrow. I know there's a lot of questions. I imagine there are some unknown questions, cuz you hadn't even had a chance to dive into it as deep as you wanted to be, so I look forward to that time. I'll just mention three things, highlight. If you can see, in the theme of this, is one, neighborhood revitalization, two, fiscal responsibility, and three, accountability to the taxpayers. Start with the first one. We have to focus on what's closest to where a resident lives. There's so much and so many things to be done. I think since we've been in office, we all came in a little staggered a couple months apart, but as a team, we've continued to make that focus and, and take a hit towards the things aren't working for our residents, and I'm glad to see that we're still focused on those things, even in a downtime. Second thing is, when I say fiscal accountability and responsibility, one of the most important things we can do for our employees is make sure the pension is solvent. At any point in time, the last thing an employee should be worried about, if and when they choose to retire, that money's gonna run out. The city has its responsibility towards the pension, and we're meeting that mark. Third thing I will say towards the accountability of the taxpayers' dollars. Notice how we went at nine of the twelve paid holidays, and we went at the furloughs related to the facilities that can't be open and provides, and doesn't allow maximize employees to perform their duties because as much as we love our employees and wanna invest in them and make the best decisions to keep making sure they can stay on the front line to provide services, taxpayers expect dollars to be used for those who are performing. When you're in a down year, um, that is how we get to, if you're not working on a holiday, that's why we can't pay you, because there's no money to pay you. Not that you don't deserve it, it's not that we don't wanna give it, it's not that you don't deserve your cola, merit, or longevity. But if it doesn't come in, it can't go out. Mr. President, it is not coming in this year at the rate we need it to be. So I thank you for your time. Um, I thank you for your service, and I look forward to continuing conversations over the next few weeks around the budget. I yield it back to you, Mr. President.